Y'all bear with us just a moment, we'll be starting in just a few minutes.
All right, welcome, greetings everyone, welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting at the Shreveport Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. We are going to start out with an invocation, and I'll ask Mr. Andrews to lead us in the invocation if he wished to stand, and our pledge of allegiance will leave us in a minute.
Let us pray, Father, we thank you for this day, and once again, we thank you for the opportunity to be called servants, we pray that you be with us today as we entertain requests from our citizens throughout the city of Shreveport and the surrounding parish areas, we pray for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we go through the deliberation process, it is in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you all again for all being here, we are very grateful for all of your time and your interest and your support of the community, and we appreciate your patience, because these meetings can sometimes get a little drawn out, so thank you all for being here, we want you to know how much we value your input. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium, for future notification purposes, it's very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board, we will call each case on the agenda in order, and hear first from the applicant, and then those speaking in favor of the application. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson, and three minutes will be allotted for each additional speaker. We'll then hear from those wishing to speak against an application, again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson, and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment at that time. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. For consent agenda items, I don't think we have any today, and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda items. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it's your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter that you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all your cell phones while MPC board is in session, the commission values your testimony, and we appreciate your compliance with these So our first agenda, our first item is to approve the minutes for January 9th meeting.
So moved.
Right, Mr. Curtis is moved.
Second.
Ms. Demartow is seconded, call for the vote approval, but yes if approved, nay if not. Our minutes are approved, Mr. Clark?
I would just advise the board members, Madam Chair, that the microphones do not pick up as well as they should, you might want to speak directly into them so that the persons in the audience can hear exactly what you're saying.
All right, thank you, can y'all hear me? Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no consent agenda items unfortunately, we'll move on to our public hearing items. Case number SP119, preliminary and final plat, applicant is Polaris Services.
Good afternoon, Ricky Wood with Polaris Services, 3602 North Market Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. The surveyor here representing this specific case here for the subdivision plat, also understand it's stipulated based on item number 13 rezoning, I'm here to answer any questions.
Is there any questions? All right, seeing no questions, thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody in opposition? All right, board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, a motion to approve by Mr. Remides, a second by Mr. Andrews, discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. This matter is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next case is case number C919, a zoning request, applicant Builder Supply Company, Inc.
My name is Carlton Golden with Builder Supply Company, we're at 1400 Marshall Street, and we've been in business since 1913, about 45 years ago, we were asked to be zoned, and it was zoned I-2, we've maintained that zoning until the Unified Development Code came out, and we were rezoned, and we wanted to appeal to you to rezone us back to I-2 like we have been the last 45 years. Any questions?
All right, thank you, any questions?
Good to see you, Mr. Wood.
Good to see you, thank you.
All right, is there anybody else here to speak in favor of this application?
Hello, my name is Stephen Weeks, my address is 4830 Line Avenue, number 303, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7106, I own the property next to Builder Supply, and I just wanted to let y'all know that I support it being rezoned back to I-2.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weeks, does anybody, any questions for Mr. Weeks? No, all right, thank you very much. Anybody else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? All right.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, a motion to approve by Mr. Colvin, second by Ms. Demartow. Call for the vote. All right, and... Motion is approved? Sorry, I cannot see.
No, it's just that I abstained on the property around it.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Remides, all right, motion is approved. And thank you, Mr. Golden, for going through the process of getting that done, we appreciate that. All right, next case, case number C1019, zoning request, applicant is Cityview Realty, L. Rossi.
Good afternoon, thank you all for letting me come and speak. My name is James Lester, I reside at 219 Fannin Street, right here in downtown, 7101. I am the owner of property at 5500 Jewell, we're applying for a rezoning from heavy commerce, from, I'm talking from heavy industrial to heavy commercial, that's the property that I've owned since the 70s, I think 78 or somewhere like that. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Lester.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion to approve by Ms. Demartow, second by Mr. Curtis. Call for the vote. Application approved, thank you, Mr. Lester, there you are, thank you. All right, next case number C1119, a zoning request, which is actually by our, the Shreveport Caddo MPC, Mr. Clark?
Yes, Madam Chair, this was an effort by the MPC staff to rezon, downzone the property from I-2 that I won, we found that there were some problems with the notification process, that some of the property owners were not properly notified, at this time, we were requested that the board would defer until next month, in order for us to properly notify all the property owners.
So moved.
All right, so we have a request to defer?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Second.
All right, and a motion to approve, that request to defer by Mr. Colvin, second by Mr. Remides, any discussion? All right, those in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. Whoops, accident.
And, Madam Chairman, one, one point to note, we've had in the past, not all the time, but problems with that automatic system not notifying everybody in that zoned area, it seemed like one side of the street, the south side of the street, didn't get notified of this change, so we may want to look at that, you know, a little bit closer in the future.
If I may, Madam Chair, that's part of the reason that we were asking for the defer, we will examine our system after this meeting and determine what happened, and ensure that it never happens again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it, Ms. Clark.
The motion to defer is approved. All right. Next case, number C1219, a special use permit and site plan, and the applicant, I'm going to mispronounce your name, Joel...
Wamscans.
Wamscans.
That's not me.
Oh, that's not you.
Matthew Lynn, 627 Rutherford, and I wanted to introduce you, Sean James, and so Sean James represents the developer, and this is a developer out of Dallas that has been buying a lot of property in Highland, and I wanted to speak in support of them. This particular property has 13-foot ceilings, has a full basement, has your, your old-school stained wood finishes, and, and the interior, it has 10-foot tall, gosh, 10-foot wide sliding pocket doors that are original to the home, and Mr. James is the one who has refinished the house, and has done meticulous and spectacular job as far as bringing it back to its original glory, and I just wanted to introduce him so that you'll see him here again in the future remodeling houses, and I just wanted you to know my testament of his character, as well as the quality of build-out that he does on these houses. Thank you, is there any questions? And we are going to paint the stripes.
And I thank Madam Chair that this house is in the historic, is in historical district, and if at such time you choose to do any exterior changes on the inner structures, there's a process you would need to go through, and you need to get in touch with us.
In fact, we heard it's possible that's one of the first set of mayor's houses that was from Shreveport, so we're trying to get the historical spot to that, try and add that to the list.
And we just, we just remind each person that's coming into that district to make sure, if they're encouraged to change anything, to get in touch with us.
No problem.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you all.
Is this for resale, I guess?
No, no, we're going to keep it, it's not going back for resale, it's going to try and do like some, just little office spaces for people that are local, so they don't have to go downtown, just keep little cohab spaces, you know?
Yeah, and...
It's real nice, if you guys ever want to come by there, you don't hold a mat, you can hold me, come by and see, it's really nice inside.
And since he's talking, Madam Chair, you might want to get his name.
Yeah, Mr. James, Ricky Wood, just go ahead and announce, that way we'll have you on the record, and you'll get notifications.
My name's Sean James, address is 1109 Dalzell, 7104, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Okay, great, thank you, that just gets you in our records.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Roca.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I will, what is your pleasure, board?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Remides?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jason? Do you say that first? Mr. Roca, you've got to speed up. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no?
Sorry. Thank you.
All right, and this application's approved, thank you all. All right, next case, number C1319, special use permit, the applicant is William Roberts.
Welcome. Hi, my name is Ben Nicholson, I'm here on behalf of the Pediatrics and Autism Center. I reside at 1302, or 302 Barker Drive in Monroe, Louisiana, we're here to discuss the special permit use of 650 Olive Street building for office and medical office usage. Any questions?
All right, do you want to tell us what special use you're seeking to have permitted?
Sure, we provide pediatric and autism therapies, speech, OT, PT, and a special therapy for children with autism, applied behavioral analysis, so we serve children from age of birth all the way up to 21-years of age.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nicholson? All right, seeing none, thank you. Is anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, board?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve by Mr. Andrews, second?
I'll second.
By Ms. Demartow, any discussion? I will say this applied behavioral analysis is something we need in Caddo, so thank you. All in favor, vote yes. And motion's approved, thank you, Mr. Nicholson. All right, here we go, moving on. Case number P119, a zoning request. Applicants, Moore and Associates?
Coming up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Andy Craig, Moore and Associates, 1324 North Hearn, Suite 301, Shreveport, 7101. On behalf of Mr. Rossi, the owner and developer of the property, because of some last-minute things that developed, would like to request a continuous and deferral on this case if that's possible.
All right. Board, any questions about, does this, does this have to do with continued efforts to work with the homeowners association, or the community, or do you even know?
I wasn't really privy to the details of it, but it had to do with an immediate neighbor, it was not the homeowners association, it was something with immediate neighbor.
All right. Any questions? Do we need to... To the deferral?
You need to listen to our position, ask for our position, Madam Chair.
Or is there anybody else in favor first?
Is Mr. Rossi here today?
He left.
He left, okay. And so this, so if this matter is deferred, it will come back before our board next month, and our meeting next month will be July the 10th because of the 4th of July holiday? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself, never mind, that's, we were talking about that a minute ago.
I shouldn't have even mentioned that.
So our meeting next month will be March the...
Fourth, I believe.
The fourth or the sixth? The first Wednesday.
It'd be March the...
Sixth.
Six, sorry, yes, that's when it'll be, so if you, yes.
What, what is the reason to the defer, I mean, why are we, why are we waiting for?
They wanted more time. Do you want to ask Mr. Moore?
There's some issues that came up with an immediate neighbor that he wanted to have some time to address with him and work out, that he hadn't, he was just informed of it just a few minutes ago, or, you know, just recently, so, that's, that's about all that I know.
Okay. Any other questions? Right, okay, is there, okay, thank you, Mr. Moore, I think we'll proceed at least...
Craig.
Mr. Craig.
I'm sorry, Mr. Craig. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application today, pending the, pending the deferral decision? All right, anyone here to speak in opposition to this application?
Got him coming up?
Yeah, yes, the first person, let me remind you, we'll have 10 minutes, so the, the spokesperson coming first should probably be your major spokesperson, and then everyone after that will have only three minutes.
My name is James Parkinson, I live at 10357 Keysburg Court, in the North Ferry Landing subdivision. First of all, I want to say thank you for giving us the time today to, to speak, especially if we're going to defer, because I know a lot of people took off work, and, and other things they had going on to be sure and be here, so thanks for taking a moment for us to hear. I do have a presentation, we had some copies we're passing around, if you want to, I don't know if there's a way to see it up on the screen or not.
There is.
They're in the process of trying to get so that it can be visible on the screen.
Sure.
Proceed on if you'd like.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the reason I'm here is to speak mainly for the homeowners association as a whole. When the rezoning sign went up in the neighborhood, I can't tell you how many different phone calls, emails, Facebook messages, you name it, that we started getting over this, and to be honest with you, a lot of it at first was from misinformation, or lack of information, to be honest with you. We did a poll with the homeowners that are with our Facebook group, we have a pretty active Facebook group, to be honest with you, and 97.5% of them were not in favor of a storage building being built there, for various reasons which I'll get into later. 2.5% of them did vote for, I know that some of them are related to the person trying to develop, but that's okay. We also started an online petition that beyond, went beyond our homeowners association, and the last I looked yesterday is 175 signatures, and was growing. This is not just something for our neighborhood that we're opposing, there's obviously some people in the community around us that also oppose it for different reasons. The main one, right off the bat, is home values, or fear that home values will drop because of that being right in, right next to our subdivision. Noise, 18-wheeler traffic in particular, I know, we, several of our homeowners have talked to a lot of you, I know that at first it was, well, we won't have 18-wheelers in there, when we have people that are moving, and they're using Mayflower, and they've got too much stuff, they're going to send that 18-wheeler down the road to unload it at their storage building, or at least try to. Aesthetics, and I know, I did read through the staffing report, and appreciate all the hard work that was done to try to make it look like it fits around the neighborhood, I know we did the same thing, or y'all did the same thing with CVS, which, when it was first developed, was, looked great there, and when they maintain it, it looks great. Yes, sir. Thank you, appreciate it. The next complaint that I started getting was about crime, and I mean, people know that there's valuable stuff stored there, so would the crime rates start to rise if we had these types of storage buildings in our back door? And of course, lights, we've had problems in the past with developments around the neighborhood, and the lights that they put in shining in the back windows of all these neighborhood homes that were, have been established now for some time. So, again, commercializing the area around the neighborhood is something that is of great concern for our neighborhood. When I talked earlier about unknowns, the unknowns that we have, and I know that some of you have already answered these for me, and I appreciate it, but these are the unknowns that I'm getting from the homeowners themselves, and I just want to relay. Does the area need another storage facility? We've got a lot of them around, I've, we've counted 10 within a six-mile radius of where we're at, so the question obviously comes, is, is it going to thrive, or is there something that's going to fail and then become an empty building? If it doesn't thrive, what happens when it's already commercial, who can move in there, what can they do with it? Was a feasibility study done by the developer or the MPC, I think the answer I got back from that is we don't require that. I wish you did, because if you did, then we would know that, those answers. And how easy is it to rezone, once we go commercial versus residential, for them to move that around? There's other properties right next to this one that this current owner has, and future plans for that, we've already heard from other sources, is that they're going to continue to develop other commercial properties there. Talked about 18-wheeler traffic. Restricting hours of operation, all those, I know a lot of that was in your staffing reports, I don't want to get too deep into that, but I think those are the main concerns that were, were handed to me. So, we have these guidelines and restrictions in place, and I'm going to go back to the CVS example in just a minute, but what about the enforcement of that? And I know that's not necessarily this board's issue, that's something that Standards Division for the city might have, or if it's in the parish, parish would have to enforce that, then, you know, we're approving something that we can enforce, and are we going to hold these standards up high? The CVS example I'm going to use, it's, I don't, when it was first built, it looked great, it was being maintained, it was fine, but shortly thereafter, it was not, and they were allowed to go downhill. The pictures that are there are what it is as of this morning, after months of complaining, and going to CVS and other officials, and trying to get a halt of someone in standards that would pursue it, and nothing would ever happen. So, until we finally went to their corporate office, and was complaining there, and finally found somebody that, that cared, I guess, enough to do that. But I'm going to leave it there on that picture, that area out in the front of CVS, on the corner, stayed looking like that for over two months. So, we said, you got to have all this nice flower bed and everything out front, but nobody's enforcing it to make it look like it should for our surrounding community. None of these concerns, I'm sure, are anything that you haven't heard before, um, from other subdivisions, and it's obviously something that is a concern all over, so I'm hoping that it's being taken seriously. In a nutshell, I know that the, the owner, developer, have certain rights to be able to do what they want to with their property. We're not saying that they don't. What we're just simply saying is that we have some real concerns about our properties because of what they are doing with their property. And we want to make sure that what is happening is something that is not going to be negatively affected to our community. And it's not just what's in our little community in North Ferry Landing, but the surrounding community. It's not also about being resistant to change, somebody, some people are. We do want to see something happening with there, that, that would be fine, it's not that. But when we first heard that it was a storage building, because we started digging, when it was a rezoning sign put out front, and that's the first time anybody's heard anything about it, um, there was a knee-jerk reaction there that was very, very negative. I do have some suggestions there, I, I asked for some suggestions from people in our neighborhood, because I'm one of those people that, I, I get a lot of complaints in my job too, and I hate it when people come with complaints, but they don't come with solutions. Okay, so, we would like to see, i- if they want to develop something there, that's not something that we're against, but it's a neighborhood area, it's not a commercial area, so to speak. We would like to see something that stays in that realm. Southern Loop has already started to be commercialized, and let's keep it out that direction, is basically the, the sentiment that I get from our residents. So, library, public, community center, um, there's a church already there, uh, child development center, swim club, something that is, uh, neighborhood-friendly, um, that would be beneficial to everybody around us. Lastly, if we, if we cannot stop it and we can't do anything other than that, we ask to do exactly what you've already started the process in doing. Please make sure that it's going to be something that is going to fit our neighborhood, that we're going to make sure and work with the other agencies that are going to be responsible in enforcing those, and making sure that it stays the way that it needs to look, so we don't have a rundown area, uh, in our community. I'm expired, so, any questions?
Any questions?
I have one.
Mr. Remedy?
This would be for Mr. Clark, given your, I guess, previous position, you know, what, what is, just for the record, their, their course of action?
And, and I was going to share that, Mr. Remedy.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I thank you so much, and...
Yes, sir.
And we truly apologize to you and the citizens out in that particular area for, we were not aware that the landscaping was not being maintained. There is enforcement in place that can deal with the landscaping problems, the litter problems and so forth, and based on your comment today, uh, we will make sure that we ma-, monitor that site on a regular basis and make sure that that never happens again. The CVS site we're talking about.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, yeah, just, Mr. Clark, what, if, if they see something like this in the, in the future, is it the, is it our, I don't want to make any phone calls to our office if they're not working, but it's, it's our enforcement side of what we do, that's where they would place the complaint?
Absolutely, if we, if we are notified, we will immediately get an inspector dispatch to that area and we will take care of it. You've already utilized one of the methods that we utilize. Many times, the local, uh, facility will not respond to the, the violation complaints. So we primarily operate, contact, uh, corporate offices and coordinate all those activities through them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our board?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson, and thanks for the, the, um, slide shift and for the handouts. All right, anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Julie Gilli, uh, 9019 Meridian Way. So, thank you all, uh, for listening to us, and even if we do get deferred, hopefully this will remain with you guys. So I work for the BRF, the Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program. Every day, I am tasked to do economic development to help grow North Louisiana. So I am one of Shreveport's biggest advocates for development. However, um, when we look at development, I want to be cautious that we don't benefit one property owner to the detriment of over two-hundred-and-ninety houses' property owners. So when we start to weigh the fact that one property owner could have a return on investment for their property, that's great, I love that. That increases the tax base for our city, um, nothing but good things, right? But not when it could potentially hurt all of the property owners around, uh, and potentially have a negative ROI on their property values. So I would just, um, really, I, I would plead with the, the board to, to really think about, um, the decision to allow this particular type of development on this property. I would love to see this, um, property owner develop something there, um, and, and something that certainly would benefit themselves and also the rest of the residents of the North Ferry Landing. Thank you.
Thank you. What, any questions? No questions, all right, anyone else here?
Well, I did.
And your, your last name again was Dil?
Gilli.
Gilli, thank you, it was Gilli.
Ms. Gilli, um, in your line of work, do you do any kind of feasibility studies or looking at what storage units particularly do to property values? Because that's really, I don't think, under our preview, is it to do that? Okay.
So, I will say, yes, we do feasibility studies. Yes, I have been a part of feasibility studies and I've gone and found fe-, uh, other feasibility studies for other developments. I have done some initial research, I do not have all of it with me today. If needed, I certainly can pull that together and provide it to the board. If this is deferred, I absolutely will have it. There are some feasibility studies that I've found that any type of commercial development that is done immediately adjacent to residential properties does have a immediate and short, in the immediate term during the construction time and shortly thereafter, of decreasing property values. Depending, and then it gets, there's, it's not cookie cutter, so depending on what type of development it is, it's possible that it can have a potential negative impact, uh, future down the road, it depends on what it is, but the...
Or positive, right.
It, it is positive, it, it is possible that it is positive. I don't have any, um, exact, I wasn't able to, in the short amount of time I knew about this, I did not find any feasibility studies specifically geared towards storage facilities, but if given a little more time, I certainly will find them.
Yeah, I would encourage the neighbors to contact you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilli. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? All right, you'll just state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Dorothy Turner, 10326 North Ferry Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. On this rezoning, which is going to impact others, but is really going to impact me, because my house sit right in the center that I've been there, and we've been there for forty-some years. And what he told, when he first bought it, he didn't insinuate there was going to be a business, but he also told me that, um, it was a done deal he had made with the planning committee, and it was over a year ago, and it was done, that there was nothing I could do about it or come up here and say. So now, here it is, it is. So, I'm against it, because it's my home that likes the trucks, and he already have a business there, and it's not a commercial area. He has this big building, trucks in all day and night now, so now, I'm going to be impacted even more, and I live right in the middle, because he's, he's all around my house, and I don't like the intimidation I'm getting from him. So that's why I'm opposing it. It's my home, I should have the right to come from work and live in peace and quiet after work, and just like he has. He want a bill for his home, I have a home. He want to make more for his family, I have my home and my family. I need peace, just like he do, and that's why I'm opposing it. It's my home.
And what is your last name again?
Turner.
Turner, okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Turner?
Excuse me.
Mr. Joseph?
Good afternoon, Ms. Turner.
Yes.
I thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come down and visit with us. Uh, my question essentially, uh, cuts to what sort of business activity is he already, uh, executing out of the property?
Uh, he's, um, he's fence, he has a, uh, fence company, welding, and it's this big building he has right there in the back, and you have had several neighbors from North Ferry Landing complain and call you guys, and y'all have came out, and he keeps saying it's not, but it is. There's truck go, they load up on their gas, they fill up gas, I mean, it's been there for almost, what, two years or more now? It's been numerous of complaints. They're in and out, there's people all the time, so can you imagine what it's like that now for me? And then you're going to put a building that's going to cause rodents, everything, I don't have a problem, cost me more money than I'm going to have to invest in now to keep a exterminator coming. So, but his business has been back there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mr. Remedy's?
Do I?
Turner.
Ms. Turner?
Excuse me.
We have another question.
I, I was just going to say, if, to save yourself a trip, uh, this is the, uh, this is where you make those sort of complaints, if somebody's operating a business without a certificate of occupancy. That was the apartment that Mr. Clark headed up prior to becoming our executive director, and so, what I'm saying is that while you're here, you can make that sort of complaint in person, and they'll look into it, and if they find that there is...
So is that a form, because plenty have already made it?
Oh, you've already made that?
That's been made by the people behind us.
Okay.
For the noise in the building where they weld it.
I was just trying to save you a trip, that this is the, uh, you know, this is the agency that would go out and investigate that.
They have been out.
Okay, okay, very good.
Just nothing was done.
Okay.
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Remedy's, uh, Ms. Turner, you're absolutely right, we did receive complaints, if I remember correctly, I think they were back in 2008, in relationship to some type of commercial activity occurring in the building, uh, on the property. We have been investigating, uh, what's going on out there. Every time inspectors go out there, there's nobody at the building. We've noticed that there are tanks, there are trailers, there are tractors, there are other heavy equipment, which lead us to believe that possibly, there is commercial activity occurring. We still have an open case, we're still investigating, and we have enough evidence, if at such time we find that that is the case, we will take appropriate action.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments for Ms. Turner? Thank you, Mr. Clark. Saying that, all right, is anyone else here to speak in opposition?
My name is Lady Arnold, I live at 9914 Loveland Court, and I, I live in the subdivision North Ferry Landing. I want to reiterate what Ms. Turner said, yes, he does operate a business out of there, because I went to, um, I called a number about a wrought iron fence being put in my backyard, and he told me to meet him at that building, and he, at, me and my husband went and met him, he showed us all the wrought iron that he had, and, um, uh, came out and gave us an estimate, so he does operate a business. I'll try not to cover some of the things that the others have talked about, but I am concerned with times of operation. Will eighteen-wheelers and U-Hauls be coming in day or night? Because I understand it's going to be a twenty-four-hour, um, storage unit. Will the tenants be allowed to clean out their storage units and pile it up by the dumpster and leave it? Who's going to patrol that? Is the unit owner's going to be able to have garage sales there when the, uh, units, uh, are abandoned? Who's going to patrol that? The storage units, people store all sorts of items in storage units, um, they cause rodents, they cause snakes, I have a real concern with that. The lighting, are we going to have big poles that the lights are going to shine into our houses? The drainage, we already have an issue with drainage in our neighborhood, uh, putting those storage units, or is that going to cause additional drainage to us? I'm afraid of the crime also. We were aware that the corner lot, um, on North Ferry and Southern Loop was commercial. I'm not opposed to growth either, I think the growth should be conducive to the area. We did oppose certain, um, like a Sonic or a Fred's, but I had no problem with the CVS, it doesn't seem to deter from our neighborhood. We were, we have roughly two-hundred-and-ninety-one homes in our neighborhood, we pay roughly, uh, one million six-hundred thousand in, uh, city and parish taxes. Uh, our homes range from two-hundred-and-forty to three-hundred thousand dollars. We pay our fair share in taxes, I think, you know, I think we're entitled to have some kind of say here. We think that, I think the city took advantage of us when they took us into the city and wouldn't take our streets, so we get very little for our tax money as it is. My home is an investment, I've, I've retired, um, I think that this storage unit will deter from the value of my home, and if it, if it comes in, we'll probably be moving to North Osota, just like a lot of others are. I ask you as members of the board, would you like a storage unit to back up to a home that you've invested over three-hundred thousand dollars in? And do you really want to be the cause of yet another neighborhood in the city of Shreveport going down? We have issues in this town, we all know it, and I really would hate to see that, um, another neighborhood is affected by something like this.
Thank you, and it's Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Arnold, thank you, Ms. Arnold, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Arnold? All right, saying none, thank you.
Ms. Arnold?
Yes, sir.
Would you come by here, please? Come on ahead, Ms. Turner.
Okay. Is anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Make your way.
Ms. Turner?
Yes, sir.
I'll try to speak clearly, my voice is kind of cracking up a little bit from some junk going around, but my name is James Goins, uh, my wife and I live at 9771 Aiello Lane, uh, in North Ferry Landing, and I feel for Ms. Turner, because she is in the property right behind my house, and I probably have the largest horizontal area bordering this, proposed development there. When we first moved to Shreveport, uh, eight years ago, had a job opportunity, we took it, we were looking for a nice neighborhood, wound up, looked all over, looked in Bossier, looked in Benton, looked everywhere, wound up living down the, uh, North Ferry Landing. It's a nice neighborhood. Uh, we have a pie-shaped lot, it was a gorgeous lot, we put some trees out there, there was trees in the back, it was beautiful. All the trees have been cut down and they're burning it continuously, to get rid of them, I guess. Uh, the storage unit that was in the business that was mentioned earlier is right next, it's not behind my house, it's behind my neighbor's house. And I know when they built that, that probably, uh, our neighbor probably got a better deal on that property than he would have if that house had not been there, if that business had not been there. My concerns are much like the others, uh, obviously, it's going to be an eyesore. It's going to be an eyesore for us, every time we go outside, there's going to be noise, it's a twenty-four-hour business, uh, there's going to be lights, uh, I just, I'm like some of the others, I'm not against development, I'm certainly not. If we add something like down in front of Providence Place, you know, nice restaurants or, you know, whatever, a bank, you know, something to serve the community, it'd be great. But I don't think that's what's being planned here, though, so... And that's really, without repeating everything that everybody else has said, but I've still got a minute. Whip out my notes here, see if I... Can anybody tell me, now, this may be incorrect, but I think I read somewhere that that was going to be a C1 zoning? Does anybody know if that's...
Yeah, I can answer that. The request originally, uh, was actually C3, and then it was revised to C1, but staff was recommending that the base zoning of RE remain there, and it only, if they were inclined to approve it, only include the storage use and no other. So the C, what we were recommended is not to go to the C1 base.
Okay.
With this, with this particular type of zoning, um, then what would happen is the board can put conditions on, on, uh, a planned unit development, this is actually called a small planned unit development, so there are, if they were inclined to approve it... So there are, if they were inclined to approve it, there would be a number of stipulations that would be associated with it, but there would not be a right to do commercial uses beyond exactly what's on those plans.
Okay, well, I don't know if anybody's seen the plans, I've not seen the plans. But property values, obviously, that's the big one. Some people say, well, unless you live right where I live, or Ms. Turner lives, or our neighbors, it's not really hurting you, but that's incorrect. My wife's been in real estate off and on for years, and there's such thing as comps, everybody knows that, when somebody's looking to shop in a neighborhood, they do comps for the area. And if any of the houses in the development, development area have unsightly things around them, or the value's gone down, it does infect the entire neighborhood. It's not just me, it's not just Ms. Turner, it's not just the other residents that live that are backing up to it, there's quite a few residents that will be seeing that every day.
All right, thank you, and was it Mr. Goins? G-O-I-N-S?
G-O-W-E-N-S.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goins, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Goins?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Betty Hale, I live at 9877 Loveland Court in the North Ferry Landing subdivision. My backyard actually is in the northern fence line there. I actually have a very lovely house on a small lot, and my bedroom is four to six feet from the fence line. I've enjoyed my backyard, we have enough room to play cornhole, I love living in that neighborhood, but my concern is, am I gonna be able to sleep at night? Are the lights gonna be shining on me? It's kinda my retirement home, I'm getting close, and I really don't want my property value to go down. I'm opposing this, and I really wish it would stay residential.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hale, is it Ms. Hale? Haley? Does anybody have any questions?
No.
I just wanna make sure there was no questions for you.
Oh, thank you.
And your last name again, is Haley?
Hale, Hale, H-A-L-E.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hale. All right, thank you, seeing no questions? All right, anyone else here to speak in opposition?
My name is Kenny Roberts, I live at 9706 Aiello, A-I-E-L-L-O, Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106 North Ferry Landing. James has covered several of the issues that have come up. The other, there are some other subdivisions, St. Charles, of course you have Southern Trace out that way, we already have some traffic issues that are taking place, we have a new school being built out there. There is, just finished, a storage facility right across from Providence. Now, out there, we have six, roughly six, seven restaurants, and we're building a family community out there. I have financed these in Dallas, they are moneymakers, there is no two ways about that, unless you have to foreclose on them. And when you foreclose on them, then you get a secondary, and they are usually not, not as caring with regards to the individuals that live around them. We did not finance any that would affect local neighborhoods. North Ferry is a growing area, that whole southern end out there is a growing area, and I am fully opposed to this. They could put restaurants in, you have chains that can come out there and do that, some type of a store, but this really doesn't make sense for three or 290-something residents that live out there. No impact studies, according to my talk with Gene, there has been no impact studies with regards to the damage to the roads, the amount of traffic, which is something you guys will probably end up facing sooner or later. The new schools coming in, we've got two strip centers out there that have about six or seven different vacancies in them, and there are businesses that are talking about moving in out there. I do not know how they're gonna be affected when they start finding out that we're gonna have a storage facility sitting out there. The other issue would be, what, how's that gonna be controlled? If I rent something out there and I put dog food in it, you're gonna have rodents, there is no two ways about it. You'll see mechanics working on cars out there, I mean, you put your hot rod in there, and you wanna go out there and be able to work on it. With it being a 24-hour facility, with where it's located, and I feel for Ms. Turner, because she lives, this guy built this right around the middle of her house, and if y'all haven't had the chance to go out and look, I'd ask you to do that. I am fully opposed to it, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts, is anybody have questions, Mr. Roberts, or comments? Sorry, I think we're good, thank you. All right, anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Larry Pierce, P-I-E-R-C-E, I live at 9890 Loveland Court in North Ferry Landing subdivision. I'm a detective with the Caddo Sheriff's Office, and having spent time on patrol and being an investigator, I can tell you firsthand that these facilities bring crime, and they bring a lot of crime. People break into them constantly, people keep illegal items in there, it's a good place to store stuff if you're a thief, and put it in somebody else's name, we never know to go look at it. I mean, but they do get broken into a lot, and it doesn't matter what kind of security measures you put in place, you can have electronic gates, it's just, it's easy to climb a fence with a pair of bolt cutters. So I can, I can tell you, I can guarantee you that this place will have crime at it with thieves. The new play, the new storage building that's just down Southern Loop, matter of fact, just during its building phase, had thieves come in, break in, and steal supplies out of there, steal their copper, steal the things out of there. So before that place even got up and operational, they were already having problems with theft. In addition to that, the traffic increase, it's already just a tough place to get in and out of that neighborhood, we're right there at a traffic light, you have, immediately after our entrance, you have the entrance to the CVS, between there and the traffic light, then you're gonna put another business's entrance on the other side of the entrance to our neighborhood, it's just gonna make it a nightmare to get in and out of our own neighborhood. It's already a traffic hazard with people, you know, they don't know whether, you put in your blinker on to turn the neighborhood, nobody has a clue what driveway you're gonna turn into within the 50-yard range, or there's gonna be four or five different entrances in and out of businesses and neighborhoods and driveways. So the traffic, I believe, is gonna be a bigger issue, a big issue, that's a school bus stop right there, for elementary school, high school, coming in the mornings and in the evenings, again, with the increase in traffic, there's not a lot of room right there for parents to stop and park as it is, to let, to pick up and drop off their kids for the bus, so they're gonna have a safety issue added onto that, just for those kids getting on and off their buses. And then lastly, I just wanna point out that I was raised very poor, I grew up poor. I worked my butt off, I got a great job with the Sheriff's Office, I still don't make a lot of money, if you don't know, cops don't make a lot, my wife's a teacher here in Caddo Parish. We also don't, so neither of us just make a lot of money. I grew up my whole life, and in high school, I had friends who lived in the whole Alaby Road area, and all I thought was, man, I wanna grow up one day and move out there. When I first got out on patrol, and I was on my training, and I drove through the North Ferry Landing subdivision one day, 'cause at the back of it, all those were kinda brought in as houses were being built, and I drove through there, and a matter of fact, I saw my house that I, that I live in today, and I went, man, I wish I could afford a house in here. And I worked hard, and me and my wife were able to buy a house in there, and we bought out there because of the neighborhood, because of how it was, it was remote, but we could still get in the city and do what we wanted to do when we wanted to do it. And I just don't wanna see it lost, that dream lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce, Detective Pierce, do you have any questions? All right, thank you.
How are you guys doing? My name's Cody Crowder, I live at 9770 Aiello Lane, which is in the cul-de-sac that backs up to where we're talking about now, backs up actually to the big metal building that they do business out of, but, you know, we'll get to that point later. The main thing I wanna say, and everyone's already made their points, but the last gentleman that spoke made a great point, and it's exactly how I feel. I lived in Broadmoor for a long time, and I always wanted to live out in that area, and I worked hard, I worked at Holmes Auto Group, I worked my way all the way up, and I saved for 10 years, every month, I set back money to move into this neighborhood, build the house I wanted to build, and I did that. When I did that, I knew that it backed up to a residential area. Well, now, he's trying to come in and change that area, and I just don't feel like it should be approved. It's a residential area, our entire cul-de-sac are children that play outside, my kids are in my backyard every night, so now I've gotta worry, who's in this storage facility? Who's people, who's storing their things in here? Who can jump that fence? You know, I've got kids playing every day, so it's just something I don't think needs to be done at all. I appreciate you guys for listening to our, listening to us, but I also do wanna say they are doing work out of that now, if you do wanna investigate that, I can send you pictures any day. So that is being done now, and I just don't know if we want, or you guys want to approve someone who already doesn't listen to your rules to begin with. So he's already doing business without you guys knowing, and acting like he doesn't, so I don't know if we wanna approve someone who doesn't listen already. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crowder.
It's all right.
Anybody?
Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition? All right, Mr. Craig, do you want to have an opportunity to rebut? You're welcome to, I know you're not the owner, but...
No rebuttal at this time.
No rebuttal, all right. Thank you. All right. All right, Mr. Andrews, motion to defer and continue?
Second.
The second by Mr. Marto, any discussion? All right, vote yea to defer and continue, and nay not to.
Madam Chairman, one point I'd like to make, all that was said is on record, so I know the citizens, if they want to, they're welcome to come back next time, but it will be on the docket, what, what they said, for the actual case, you know? 'Cause I know a lot of people can't get off twice to come back and listen.
No, correct, and there's even a video with y'all on it, so it's all...
Can I ask one more question?
Um, I think we're out of, that would be out of order, but you can talk to our staff. Also, I have a question, Mr. Clark, if, once there is a, the hearing does, once it's heard and the, and the motion is actually, or the application is voted on, is a spud still appealable, it means it still go on to the parish commission by, as a right? So we're just a recommending body for a spud as well? Okay, just wanted y'all to know that, the parish commission ultimately will decide this case. Okay, yeah, Mr. Remedies?
This is for the staff, did we ever determine if this is, I know part was in the city, part was in the parish, but who the appealing body would be?
It actually is, it actually is the parish. We started off with, with some properties that was in the city and in the parish, but he scaled it down to where it's all parish now.
Okay.
So if you're following this as it goes along, just understand that we're recommending unapproval or disapproval only, either way, it's still gonna go to the commission, so you can talk with your commissioner, and there's other ways, you can also go to the commission meetings as well. So thank you all for being here. All right, next case, case number P219, a zoning request, Polaris Services Inc., our
Good afternoon, Ricky Wood with Polaris Services, 3602 North Market Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. Here representing this zoning, rezoning request for the subdivision that was approved, the first item on the meeting this afternoon, be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Um, does anybody want more information about it, or...
This is a request from RA to RMHS for a mobile home subdivision.
This is one we talked about, there was...
Not our mistake, Mr. Remedies.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, any questions for Mr. Wood, Mr. Rucker?
Are there any other mobile home subdivisions in that area?
Right next to it. In fact, the sub, the unit number one, Homeland Countryside Subdivision, unit number one, is just north of it, this is a new, a new subdivision, unit two, which is just south of that, and they were zoned the same.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody present to speak in opposition? All right, seeing word, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Remedies, and a second by Mr. Joseph. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All right, that application is approved. Next case, number P319, a zoning request, the applicant is Juniper Builders, Inc.
Hi, I'm Dean Mayfield, Juniper Builders, Inc., 1054 North Point Circle. Before the UDC, this property was owned B2, and we're just simply trying to get it put back to B2.
All right, any questions for Mr. Mayfield?
This is another one of those cases, Madam Chair, where as a result of the UDC, the property was B2, and with the UDC, it was downzoned to C1, and the applicant just wanted to C2, rights again.
Right. All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone present to speak in opposition? All right, what is your pleasure?
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Andrews, and a second by Mr. Remedies. Any discussion? Call for the vote. And the application's approved. Thank you. Okay, next case, case number P419, a zoning request from Bo's or Boa's Home Improvement Construction.
Madam Chair, it appears we asked for a request to defer or continue.
All right. Anybody here on behalf of that applicant regarding the request for deferral? So has that deferral been...
We just asked that the board would accept a defer or continue.
Okay, so anybody, what is your pleasure, Board?
Motion to approve the request.
Yeah, second.
All right, a motion to defer by Mr. Remedies, and a second by Mr. Joseph. All right, call for the vote. All right, our last... Ms. Daymar.
Did I, I thought I voted.
Come on.
I don't know why I'm getting confused, thank you. I've done this for years.
All right, the final case in our public hearing is case number C1519 and P619, UDC
Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask a staff member, Adam Bailey, to present these amendments on behalf of the staff.
All right, thank you.
Several amendments that have to do with signs are covered under this proposal. The one big grill in the room is the billboards, I will get to that towards the end of this quick conversation. The first four have to do with banners. Currently, while the UDC defines a banner, it doesn't really tell you what a banner is and where it can go, and what it needs to look like in the provisions, so we added those to the UDC. We also added, we're repealing and replacing 9.8 billboards, the ultimate goal for that re... Uh, the ultimate goal, uh, for that replacement is to provide a result, reasonable and comprehensive system of control of billboards that encourage a desirable urban character, eliminate visual clutter and blight, and enhance the value of the overall community through the regulation of billboards. In January, we met with the billboard companies, uh, to get their feedback on what they would like in the billboard ordinance, we took that, uh, we rewrote it. Uh, some of the things that they asked for, uh, we gave them, others we did not. Uh, we removed the tables at their request, uh, to provide for clarity. Uh, we added actual language about the cap and replace on, uh, how it outlined and how it works. Uh, we actually added new zoning districts where billboards could go into. Uh, we also added special use provisions that, uh, in C two, C three, and some of the new zoning districts, uh, a special use permit could, would be required, uh, which would allow the public or themselves or the applicant to come before you and present their case. Uh, currently, right now, in the billboard ordinance, it's a two-for-one. Uh, we are changing that up a little bit, uh, where, uh, it's still a two-for-one, if you want to put up a new billboard and you take down two conforming, uh, or two non-conforming, I'm sorry, you could do it, uh, but if you take down a conforming billboard, it's just a one-to-one replacement. Uh, spacing, uh, currently, the spacing requirements are linear, uh, on the same side of the street, uh, we're proposing a radial, uh, to help, uh, clear up some of the clutter. And, uh, during the lunch meeting, I discussed the three existing, uh, billboards, uh, that have permits that were approved under section one oh-six prior to the UDC. Um, while, uh, we, or you as a board can't vote on that motion, I spoke with the city attorney's office, and they said that there are transitional rules that can be added to the ordinance, uh, which would allow for those, uh, permits to be approved, um, and used, but they would be used under the new regulations. So they wouldn't have to take two down, they could find a, um, a spot, a per, a permitted space, uh, and then they could build their, their billboards. Uh, so that's a real quick recap of it. I know that there are, uh, members of the industry here that, uh, would like to speak, uh, so, uh, that's all that I have. Mr. Clark?
And, and I think we need to, just, just, not so much with the billboard, but back to the banners. We found out, uh, and you'd be interested in this, we found out that the Calipar School Board has a policy that, uh, to a, to an extent, it restricts funding to schools that are doing well to provide additional funding for schools that are having problems. And we had a school that, uh, was, had parents that were doing, uh, fundraising activities in order to provide, uh, uh, iPads and other technological equipment for the students. And as part of that, uh, process, they, they would allow the sponsors, because they raised twenty-five thousand dollars, and they would allow the sponsors to put banners up on the fences, and these were fences along line avenues, you may have seen them, and that was in violation of the ordinance. And they were required to remove those, those banners, and I just had flashbacks, I shared with Mr. Jean, uh, Free Low Library was all over again, but...
Please, please.
When, when we required them to remove those, those banners. So this ordinance, we worked out a, a methodology, this ordinance will allow them to, to place those banners on the buildings of those schools, so that they still can get that support for the parents and the neighborhood and private businesses. And I just wanted to share that with you, that, that was one of the things we accomplished.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark, Mr. Remedies.
Does, does this address any of the, uh, banners, like when someone, the opening soon or now leasing, or anything like that, is this...
That's in another section of, uh, the ordinance that we, uh, deal with.
But was that addressed here?
Yes, it, it, it was addressed under the provisions, uh, of, because prior, it, it didn't discuss, all it discussed was the exhibition banner, and we determined a staff that those banners that were going up on line avenue could be classified as exhibition banners, yet they had to put them on the building. But if you wanted to put a grand opening or a sale sign, there was nothing that, um, said you could or couldn't, in, in terms of what a banner was. It defined what a banner was, but it didn't list those provisions. So the amendments that are in here that are, are, are part of your staff, are part of the staff report, say what a banner can be. So it does address those, yes.
Okay, is it limited on the time that it's allowed to be used, or is it...
Uh, there are, uh, yes, uh, up to so many times per year.
Okay.
And up to thirty days.
Okay.
Is it those tall banners that go up, you know, kind of wave in the, is that, are those permitted?
Uh, that's a...
They're over there on East Seventy Street by that Havana Steakhouse, by Gibbons, all the time, and they've been in business three years.
Those are feather...
Those are attention-getting devices.
Okay, so are they allowed or not?
They're allowed.
They're allowed.
All the time?
And they have to be permitted, though. And the permits are pretty steep.
I, I get you. There's about five of them in front of that, that's more northern than billboards to me. But anyway, uh, the last thing I'm going to say, Madam Chairman, uh, you learned a lot about billboards in the last few months, didn't you, Adam?
I have.
Yeah, so, all the things that we needed to get into UDC, this encompasses all of it, that we need to put in there, we feel, at this time?
We feel at this time, yes. I mean, it's not going to make everybody happy, I mean, but the UDC doesn't make everybody happy, I mean, with, with everything.
Got you.
So, it, it's, um, I, I, if I, you know, think that it's a good ordinance, yeah.
If I may, Madam Chair, uh, this, this, this is, this is a, an ongoing process. The, the billboard industry is, is a constantly evolving industry, and each, each entity of the billboard industry has different ideas and different thoughts. Uh, and we know that this will continue to, to evolve. I think we've gotten to a point where the ordinance, uh, has allowed some things to happen. We're trying to allow, uh, small businesses to, to be able to enter into the market, but we are not punishing successful businesses that have acquired businesses and built a substantial company. Uh, so, what we've come up with, and, and I'm sure that you'll have, feel allowed persons to speak, and they may not totally agree with everything we've done, but I don't think we can satisfy every particular, uh, person out there in reference to this ordinance. We've tried to make it as fair and as equitable as we possibly can, and we will continue to examine the ordinance and, and look at it. At first, uh, when it was enacted in the UDC, it basically created a monopoly, but we've moved beyond that point, and got to a point where we've added some additional areas where you can apply for permits, and we've even got to the point where we've allowed those permits that you've heard about previously, to be useful and be able to move, or move around to different locations.
All right, now, Mr. Clark, just in reference to the agenda, under new business, there's a...
If you would just open it up, if somebody's, is in favor and against the...
I just want to make sure we're not duplicating, are we coming back to this?
That basically takes care of it.
Basically, all right. So for now, I guess, is there anybody here who wants to speak in favor of these amendments? Seeing none, is there anyone here who wants to speak in opposition to any of these amendments?
Guess I'll go first. I don't care how empty the room is, I'm always going to be nervous up here. My name's Michael Grace, I own and operate Ace Outdoor Advertising. I've been in the billboard business for twenty-four years, uh, off and on here in Shreveport. I've applied for permits over, when it was over on Murphy Street, I've dealt with Mr. Morato, Mr. Thompson before him, and I've always dealt with the city above board. The changes that, that are before you today were, I received those at noon today, okay? So first of all, I think we need a little more time to discuss them. Um, I've not, I've, I've had a busy day, and I've been able to glance at them as all. So, I appreciate being involved in the conversation, having the workshop that we had in January, uh, and there's been a lot of changes that the billboard industry has asked for that make a lot of sense. Uh, there are some other things that they've inserted, um, that we not necessarily agree with, and they may not, uh, be consistent with the intent here. So I'd like, uh, I'd like to have another workshop, and I'd come back in a month, would be my suggestion. Uh, there's, there's still a lot of questions as to how it's going to be enforced, how certain sections are being interpreted, and I've dealt with billboard ordinances all over the country, and I've built hundreds of billboards, and I just, I think it warrants a little more discussion than me receiving the email at noon today, and y'all voting on this today. So I'd appreciate that time to maybe have another very constructive workshop, and then come back to y'all next month. That would be my suggestion. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
All right, thanks, Mr. Grace, hang on one second, is there anyone here to comment on...
I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Grace. Did you have, uh, having had the opportunity, I, I'll be at a brief opportunity to review, uh, the proposed amendments, did you have any specific opposition to the amendments as the...
Yes, yes, thank you for asking, sir. Uh, one of the things, you guys increased the spacing, uh, from digital to di- digital, and you increased, uh, you made it radial spacing. Okay, so these are things that we never discussed at our workshops, that y'all took it upon yourselves to make more restrictive. The problem you're going to have here is that you've created a stalemate, and nobody's going to remove any signs anymore, and this has happened in cities in the past. I removed a sign last year for credit, I've got another credit coming to me, I hope, and every time you all make these restrictions tighter and tougher and more broad, it makes my credit worth less and less. My credit is almost zero now. And I, when I took the sign down, I thought it was going to be worth something that I could use in the future. So when you, when you make these credits worth nothing, nobody's going to cut signs down, and you create a stalemate, and you wasted everybody's time here. So that's my take on it. And, and there, there's other things in there, sir, I haven't, I haven't nitpicked the ordinance, but that's, that's the main one. And, uh, it was already restrictive enough, because it's a cap and replace, there's not going to be any proliferation, there's not going to be any new players coming to the market. Everybody here wants to protect their little market share, is all it is. I've only got like five signs here, some of the other guys have two or three, so that's it. We just want to protect what's ours, and we want to work with the city. Um, as the city grows, there's going to, we're going to, there's going to be a demand and a need for representation in those, those new areas. We would like to maybe tear a sign down and build one there, if it's a, a, unattractive sign. These ordinance prevents that, it's just too restrictive. And, and I understand the need and the thought process behind the restrictions, but that's when it's open to everybody. You all have a cap and replace, it's closed off, okay? So that's my take on it. Thank you all very much, okay? Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Grace?
Anybody else have anything? Thank you all.
I think we're good for now, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to these amendments?
Wow, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm, uh, Stephen Keen, uh, twenty-five twelve Swan Lake Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven eleven eleven. And I'm a native of Shreveport. And, uh, I've only been in the billboard business since, uh, May the fifteenth of twenty seventeen, when the UDC came into effect. But I have four double-sided digital billboards, brand new, latest technology, in Shreveport, and I have two in Bossier. So, we started these meetings, uh, shortly after the UDC took effect, and because the more that we all analyzed it, the more problems we saw with the UDC, and how it impacted us, uh, as operators. The truth is, every one of, of my peers here is, is in business here to make Shreveport better. All right, so what, what we do as, as a group is we help other businesses succeed, we help them increase their profits. Their increased revenues increase the city's revenues, and at the same time, we make a living. So it's a triple win, it's a win-win-win scenario. We are not, none of us are putting up the old telephone pole billboards, we're putting up quarter million dollars to a half a million dollar billboards that are going to be here for twenty years. This, uh, proposal is not helpful to us. I don't think it's helpful to the city. I don't think anybody's, I mean, we're losing population, we're, we're losing businesses, we need to be attracting business, and, um, and our job is to help them succeed. I don't think anybody's going to move to Shreveport because they, they look up and they see that it's got a, a ban on billboards. They want to move to Shreveport because they can make a good living, and because, uh, there's no crime, and, 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 and things like that. Not that I can't put a billboard up, because there's another one now, uh, within one thousand feet of what used to be five hundred feet. So there is really nothing, I won't say that, there's very little in, in these recommendations that this group and myself, um, like. Um, you know, so, what else should I say? The original UDC created a monopoly, and it created an unfair, uh, playing field, um, just like that Saints game. So, so, um, I really just want to be able to, I appreciate the staff, you know, I, I've built four hundred homes here in the eighties, and I've worked with, uh, zoning forever, and I was, uh, in, in ninety-eight, I had a business of the year by the Shreveport Chamber. So, I, I mean, we're, we are, we are not here trying to get something over on the city, we're here really for a triple win, and, and that's it in a nutshell. And, and the, these proposals were not discussed, and they are certainly, they are more restrictive than the original UDC, which is the opposite direction that we were all headed in. Uh, we just want a little help, um, I'd be happy if, if I was able to, uh, put my, uh, three permits to use, and, uh, and, and then, uh, what, whatever happens after that, um, I, I just would like it to be fair and equitable.
Thank you, Mr. Keen.
Thank you.
Wait, hang on just a second, is there anybody here who wants...
Already did.
Comments for Mr. Keen?
I filled out one before. Yeah, any questions?
Any questions or comments? Um, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition to these amendments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
We put forward a, a substantial effort in trying to, to come up with some solutions to the problems with, uh, the, the billboard ordinance. One of the concerns that I had, uh, on yesterday was that possibly, uh, we rushed into getting this amendment before you without giving the opportunity for all of the companies to, to sit down and discuss with us the issues that they brought forth today. And to that end, uh, I would, as executive director, would like to make a request to defer this for a month, uh, in order for us to meet with these additional companies and sit down and have one more full-scale meeting with them. And this is the billboard section that I'm talking about, because I've already asked you to support the banners and so forth, and there's no opposition or even discussion about them. But I think we can come, we may not come to total agreement, but I think we can come back with a product, uh, in the month of March that you can vote on.
All right, uh, Mr. Andrews?
Madam Chair, and I suppose I, this is you and Mr. Clark, I heard what you said about the two issues, is there an opportunity for us to go ahead and consecrate the banner for it today, and then perhaps make a motion to defer and continue?
If you would.
The whole section, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Before we, I, I'm just confused by the agenda, because under the new business, there's an item for recommendation report on billboard ordinances, and we're voting prior to that item, the agenda item.
And we'll ask if you'll just remove that from the-
Okay. I just wasn't sure if we were gonna be getting more-
Part of the confusion that we had, that I shared with you about staff, staff transformation and so forth, allow that to transfer over to-
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna get a report about this after we voted on it. All right. Well, Board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the executive director's request and approve the banner ordinance and defer and continue the billboard portion of the ordinance until the March meeting.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Andrews? All right, any discussion? All right, a call for the vote. Motion to approve the deferral request as, as limited to the billboard ordinances.
Good, I apologize, I had to take that phone call.
Motion to-
But how much, was there a time limit put on the deferral?
Until the March-
One month. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Call for the vote?
Thank you.
All right, so the motion to defer the billboard ordinances amendments has been approved until, oh, did I not call?
You're good. I was about to repeat.
Thank you. Until the March meeting. Thank you, gentlemen, for your input. And that ends our public hearing. All right, next agenda item is old business.
I still have these.
Do we have any?
Do we have any?
We got some old business taken off.
I don't see any old business listed, no old business, okay. New business, the macro cell tower UDC recommendations, so that's Mr., that's old as well, okay. Never mind. All right. Other matters, director's report?
And Madam Chair, I promise you that next month, we will get the items on the agenda that have already been addressed off. Many apologies to the Board for them still being there, but we will take care of that on the next month's agenda. You alluded to it earlier, but I need to make the Board aware that in July-
I accidentally alluded to it.
In July, that the meeting will be the second one, which is July tenth instead of July third, because the parish commission will be meeting in these chambers, because the, their regular meeting date is July fourth, which is a holiday. And I don't know if the Board is interested in the suggestion that I made earlier, that you might want to take a bus tour in, prior to our next month's meeting, if that's something that the Board would be, would be interested in doing. I need to know the date so I can try to coordinate with Sport Trac.
Right. I think that's something our Board should consider. I don't know if the time would allow. I think it would be helpful to view the site as a group with our planners, rather than just going out there on your own, you might not be able to have access, and you also wouldn't be able to ask meaningful questions. How would we, how would we logistically?
We would have to set a time, and we would set a time.
Are we talking about-
The meeting, the meeting port could be here, and we could have a bus to leave from here and to go out there, and if there's any other site that appears to be a problem, we could swing by there.
All right. In our lunch meeting, we, there was some discussion about reinvigorating the mid-month meetings?
Yes.
Do y'all want to talk about that possibility for occasionally having a mid-month meeting? And this could be a time, perhaps, we could arrange this bus tour. If we did it in March, it would, I mean, in, where are we? We're already-
We're in February.
Well into February here. So, if we did it this month, that would be presumably the twentieth of February, is a Wednesday?
I think we have a ZBA meeting on that day. If we decided to do it, we'd have to start moving forth from February.
I'm sorry?
We'd have to start in March, April, and some more discussions would need to be had to-
Okay. But we would want, if we were to go visit the Norris Ferry site, we'd want that to be before the March meeting.
Right. And we can arrange that.
They'll be on the same meeting, same day of the meeting.
Oh, it would?
Yeah, we'd just meet here, and we'd possibly go out to the site and come back and have lunch, and then just as we don't-
Okay.
Might require you to come a little earlier.
Right. I can do that on like a limited basis, but I gotta be honest, I'm not really in a position to allocate more days in my schedule for meetings. I'm just, I'm tapped out.
Yeah. The mid-month meetings, we were just discussing as maybe an hour or two to discuss some of the issues that tend to take up our time during the pre-hearing meeting.
Yeah, I just advocate being more efficient with the time.
Yeah.
That's, that's me personally.
Yeah, no.
Because I don't like to make promises I can't keep.
So-
And Madam Chair, as you said, these meetings wouldn't be on a regular basis. But, you know, we've had, we've had an opportunity to bring someone from New Orleans to talk about improvements to mobile homes, and there was not adequate time to, for him to share as much information as you all really wanted to hear. Had opportunity to bring in persons from NL Card that wanted to talk about the intercity connector for I-49 and I-69, and these type things, and we have some people that wanna come and talk to you about the future of Shreveport and how planning impacts that. And these meetings, you just don't have time, and maybe periodically, we propose a mid-month meeting, and you could come and we could stay an hour.
Well, that's one thing, like I said, it's periodic, but if we're looking at putting them on now every other Wednesday, I gotta tell you, I can't, I can't do that.
We're not talking.
Yeah.
And Liz Swain's presentation needs to be-
It would help if it was at like a mid-month meeting.
Okay. All right, well, in terms of the next, in terms of the March sixth meeting, how, what time would we need to be here if we were gonna have a bus?
I would think that, I'm just trying to calculate, y'all generally get it one-thirty. I would think that probably twelve would be adequate time for us to get here at the bus to get loaded and go out, because that's, Southern Loop is quite a ride.
Yeah.
Okay. Is our Board, are our members checking our MPC email regularly, or is that not the best way to communicate? Because I feel like it's not. Are y'all checking your MPC inbox?
It gets forwarded to my Gmail.
Dale?
What, what?
Do you ever check your email?
Check it.
Okay, you do, okay. Just some people don't, like, I know Darren, I think, doesn't use that, he has a different email address?
Some Board members have it forwarded to the email that they prefer.
Okay.
The reason why we set it up was for public record.
That's what I was gonna ask. If you have it forwarded, then what happens when there's, I mean, is it just the same?
Well, if you read it, it's fine. If you respond from the forwarded, it usually responds, let's say you have it forwarded to a Gmail account.
Right.
If you receive it, it's fine. If you decide to respond to that Gmail account, then you open up your Gmail account.
Yeah. I remember that discussion, all right.
Yes, I'm not having mine forwarded, I'm just-
Yeah, this is mainly was done for your protection.
Right.
Right. I just wanna make sure, like, if we were to send out an email about the bus trip, I don't know who'd get it. I just wanna make sure we'd get it.
Again, having it forwarded is fine, you're still covered under the public records request. It's if you respond to that forward that opens you up to, you know, the-
From that other account.
From the other account.
All right. So, Ms. Bessie is not here today, so I wanna make sure she's, if we have a bus trip, that she's notified.
We would notify her by phone.
Okay, Mr. Clark.
This email we're talking, is this the one that, that I called the John Stattle's email? Is it the one you're talking about?
It's the Bluebird.
Right.
That is the one we talked, that all the John Stattle-
Yeah, I, blocking those is impossible. I've tried everything, it's not, they're not lockable.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, let me, let me make sure I understand correctly, we can notify everybody by email the time that the bus would be here for the tour to go out and do the Norris Ferry route. And we can continue to remind you prior to there that we will be notifying you, if everybody will check their email.
Yeah, if that's agreeable.
When you send out the email, Mr. Mike Concer, when you send out the email indicating that the cases are up-
Yeah, we can do that then. And then we can do, we also can do it when we're doing our polling as well, we can remind you then. Okay?
All right. Are we good on that? Okay. So, that's-
It's an endeavor.
Any other comments, Mr. Director?
Thank you, someone, Adam.
Okay, any public comments? The only Chair comment I would have would be, have y'all looked at the committee assignments?
Did you pass them on?
There should be in your binder.
We don't have a binder.
Oh, I'm the only one with a binder.
That was part of, you know, everything we do, there's always something that doesn't exactly carry over, but that was part of the, we should've had that as part of the electronic agenda packet.
Oh, I see. Well, I think these were, I don't know if these were emailed as well.
I think they were emailed.
I think they were emailed.
Yeah.
But-
But if you need it to be a part of the packet, we can-
You can take a look and see what committee you're on, but is there a master plan meeting coming up with the other, with the parish commission and the?
We're still trying to make sure that we have representatives from the Calipar Parish Commission.
Okay.
I think we have the representatives from the MPC Board and the City Council.
All right, well, Ms. Dan Marte, Mr. Andrews, Ms. Smith, and Mr. Rupp are on the master plan committee, unless there's an objection to that. So, I just wanna make sure that y'all four, because that's a very important committee. I think the MPC's involvement in that bigger committee is important.
As soon as we hear back from the parish commission, I'll schedule a meeting, or Mr. Clark and I will schedule a meeting, and then we will get with the, those committee members to let me know when it is.
Okay. All right, great. I don't think any of the other committees have anything ripe at the moment, unless y'all have a comment.
You probably have a project due.
I did.
Much is given, much is required, Ms. Dan Marte.
I think I'm on every single committee.
Where did Mr. Remedies go? Did he?
Can't see a man by a horse. I'm just joking. I'm just joking. Motion to adjourn. He's still being recorded.
So, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Hey, Adam, when you get a minute.
Yeah, I'm gonna need the same thing he's had.